This is Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. If you have not already done so, I'd like to remind you to silence your cellphone and all other electronic devices. You're returning from closed session. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. There were three items, and they were all discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. See if you'll rise, remove your hats if you're wearing one, for an invocation by Chaplain Dale Willis.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Father, we call upon you now, as these men and women begin to take care of the business of our city. Lord, we ask you to bless them with wisdom and insight, give them discernment. Lord, bless them to have a vision and work towards the vision for this city. Give them the morals and the guidance and the direction that this city will prosper. Lord, we say a special prayer for our police officers as they work in the riverbed and relocate people that live in that riverbed. Lord, just open up some doors so that as those people are relocated, that there will be places for them to go. And, Lord, we just honor you. We ask for your grace and your mercy on our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Okay. It's going to be my honor this evening to read a proclamation, a city proclamation, for our library. This is a proclamation from the city of Lompoc for Library Card Sign-Up Month. Whereas, a library card is the most important school supply of all. And whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of our children. And whereas, library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help and lifelong learning opportunities. And whereas, libraries empower all people to pursue their interests, discover their passions, and achieve their highest potential as learners and citizens. And whereas, librarians bring communities together, creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together. And whereas, libraries are constantly transforming and expanding their services to meet the needs of the community they serve. And whereas, libraries promote inquiry, making digital technology and information equally accessible to all. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Bob Lingle, Mayor, City of Lompoc, California, proclaim September Library Card Sign-Up Month in Lompoc, California, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor, for that. And I am going to do just a tiny little presentation on summer reading, and then it'll be done. So, it'll be quick, I promise. If I can get the technology.
You can get training from the library on this.
Yes. Okay, so, good evening, City Council, members of the public. I'm here tonight just to give a brief report on the summer reading program from this year. Thank you to all our many community partners for their support this year and every year. Thank you to all the community members that participated. And thank you to the city staff who kept the building and grounds looking great for our approximately 62,000 summer visitors. Looking back over the last few years of summer reading, there's a definite positive trend in participation. So, the green is the number of signups, the blue is the number of participants for our programs. What's really interesting is if you look up at 2015, that's, those numbers include when Boulton was still part of our library system. So, you can see, we still, even without them, have done amazing. The Bookmobile's first year in service was 2016, and that definitely helped our numbers to double that year. Our goal this year for summer reading was to break 2,000. So, thank you to the community for helping us meet that goal. I have it on good authority that for the third year in a row, our numbers exceeded one of our northern neighbors. So, way to go, Lompoc. Over 10,000 books were read this summer. I wanted to come up with some kind of cute visual for this, but the truth is that books, on average, are about eight inches tall. So, 10,000 books really isn't that impressive. It's only 1.2 miles. However, that is the exact distance between the library and City Hall, so that is pretty impressive after all. Our program attendance was amazing, but also slightly problematic for our patrons when we run out of room in the Grossman Gallery. It's a good problem to have, and I promise we are looking for a solution for next year. And this is a picture of what a full house looks like in the Grossman Gallery. I told the fire chief he is not allowed to look at this slide. So, we had approximately 62,000 visitors to the library between June 1st and August 31st. But that number actually doesn't include these people in this picture unless they came into the library, because we have gate counters. So, if they didn't go into the main part of the library, their numbers weren't even counted. So, 62,000 is pretty amazing. And on the day of this program, I took a video of our parking lot, so I'm going to show you that. If you follow us on Facebook, you've already seen it, but it's short, it's only 40 seconds. And yes, it is my voice, and yes, it is my finger in front of the camera. This is the parking lot on the day we're having the program. Every space is full. We're going to go out to the street and show you the rest. And this is the city street. It's almost all the way to the fire department. It's all the way to the stop sign on North. We're going to go around the corner next and show you the rest. And people are still trying to get in. Okay, and this is the view on North Avenue. The cars are parked all the way down, past the water treatment plant, and past the Trinity Church on the corner, and down the street. And people are still coming. So, parking is a problem, but a lot of our kids walk to the library, so that is good. Okay, so, September, Library Card Sign-Up Month. Don't forget to stop by one of the libraries for a free library card. It gives you access to over a million books, movies, and music. If you prefer your books on your Kindle or your tablet, we offer thousands of free books, audiobooks, streaming music, and streaming movies, all from the comfort of your home. All you need is a photo ID and proof of address. So, thank you all for your support of the library, and come get a library card.
Can I get a question?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question?
Yes, of course.
I have seen in the past, the church has a, to the south of there, has a sign, they put it, that says, "Additional church parking in the library parking lot." I've seen that on Sundays. Is there an agreement that's worked out, or could be worked out, that we share, they share type of deal with the, or is there one in existence?
I am not aware of one in existence right now.
Because they do have a, they had a sign they put up there. I've seen it there a couple times that says that, so I don't know. Maybe one already exists, I don't know, just...
I don't know, but I can look into it for sure. Thanks.
City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update tonight. We have, city staff has continued with the planning and outreach for the riverbed cleanup, particularly concerning Phase 2, which is the triage center that will be coming online quite quickly. This last meeting we had was with all the partners, which included the county and many of the human city-based, human services groups based in the city. Last week, the Mayor, Pro Tem, Police Chief, and myself attended the County Board of Supervisors meeting to speak about the homeless issue and the need for the partners. And from that, we have Supervisor Hartman coming up tomorrow to take a tour of the river, just to see, because she wanted to get a feel of how bad it really was. Our next phase is going to be concentrating on the physical cleanup of the actual material in the riverbed, and we'll come back to council with a cost estimate and a plan, but that'll come after we get the triage portion done. Tomorrow, Brian Halverson and I will be attending the Chambers Brown Bag Lunch Meeting tomorrow with the Board of Realtors. They have different questions that they were asking of the city, so we'll be over there doing our best to answer those questions, such as discussion about the ADUs, which are the alternative dwelling units, that's the granny units is another name for that, as well as, they wanted some information on the homeless issues that's going on in the city, so we'll be updating them on those. But the big one is, and we've had some people call, and it's good comments, most of the time, is we have our new website is up and running. The key is that you have to bear with us, we're still in a transition mode, so we're moving items from the old website to the new. So, one of the comments was on the prior city council meetings, those haven't been migrated yet. So, we're working on that. We know that's out there. It's a piece at the time as we're doing it. So, right now, one of the things, example, was a question came in about the staff reports, there's no links to those details. Well, actually, they're at the bottom of the page, so if people pull that page up, you just keep scrolling down, and every single item is below it, rather than having hyperlinks embedded in there. So, it is a work in process, we're getting there, but it's a much better process, or much better website than we had before, so that's all I had today.
Any questions? Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, there's been some public statements made that are staffing levels of the police department. Do you have an update on what's going on there?
I'm working on those numbers, I'm trying to get that. I didn't have a chance to get that this afternoon yet, so I will have that. If not, for the next meeting, for the City Manager's Weekly Report.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Public comment on the consent calendar. This is, you're appearing to speak to us for three minutes on the consent calendar agenda items. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar, and we'll move to the council. The consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine, and will be passed with one motion and one vote by the council, unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Any council member wish to pull an item? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes on any item that can or has the ability to come before this council.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I was surprised to see the article about the murals on garbage trucks. I've never seen or heard a citizen coming to the microphone and complaining how boring our garbage trucks are. I have heard many citizens come and talk about the condition of the parks, or the streets, or businesses closing. The murals on the garbage trucks can serve as the shiny ball, so people that aren't connected can think that everything else is being taken care of, with all this extra money, we can put murals on garbage trucks, when in fact, that's not the case. I urge you, and the new city manager, to review the budget and eliminate those things that do not serve citizens well. I applaud the improvement on the walkway towards City Hall. It's much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, we're going to go to a point? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Michael Baker, CEO, United Boys and Girls Clubs, San Barbara County. I just wanted to, first of all, thank the mayor and council for your continued support of the Boys and Girls Club. Our facility is doing very well. This is the busiest summer we've had in years. And those of you that haven't been in the facility on Ocean, I encourage you to please come down. If you haven't been there for a year, or two, or even three, and if it's been longer than that, you really need to come down and get a tour. We have an incredible club director in Tavika Stalling running that facility, and we're serving close to, between that and all the school locations, close to 200 kids a day. And in addition to that, we've worked out a wonderful agreement with the school district to provide recess programming for the kids on school campuses. So, that's happening on a daily basis, coming in contact with literally hundreds of kids every day. In addition, would love to set up the time, once again, it's, we're getting close to the time of year again, to do the gold card ceremonies. So, I'd like to plant that seed, and I'll be reaching out to the city manager's office. Hopefully, we can arrange for that to happen here at a city council meeting and recognize the children that have attended the clubs for 105 days. And again, I want to thank you for your continued support, and encourage you to come down and take a tour anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close oral communication, and we're going to move on to appointments. We have, first appointment is to the Economic Development Committee. We have actually four open positions, and we, right, tonight, we have one applicant. Would a council member choose to, or like to make a motion tonight? Okay.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept Robert Utterbach on the Economic Development Committee. I will just say for an associate position.
Okay.
Yes, and I'll second that also.
Okay, and this would be?
2020, I'm...
Term ending 2020, okay. Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Is Mr. Utterbach here this evening? Okay, well, congratulations, and welcome to the Economic Development Committee. The next appointment is to the Parks and Recreation Committee. This is one term ending December of 2018, and this is Councilmember Vega's appointment. Councilmember Vega, would you like to entertain a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeannie Walker to the Park and Recreation Commission for the seat that's my appointment.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Is Ms. Walker here? Yes, would you care to step forward, or just?
Just thank you, I'd like to...
Okay, good. Well, congratulations, and welcome to the Parks and Rec Department.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we are now going on to item number five, which is adoption of Resolution Number 6209, parentheses 18, establishing hanger 1 through 14 rental rates at the Lompoc Airport. And Mr. Fernbaugh.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, recommendation staff is to receive input, take public testimony, and adopt Resolution 6209-18, setting new rates for hangars 1 through 14 at the Lompoc Airport. These hangars are part of a lease agreement that comes to an end effective midnight the end of this month, and then those hangars become the property of the city. The hangars currently rent for $410 a month, and we're maintaining that rent for the remainder of this year, bringing approximately $51,000 of additional revenue to the airport. As you know, the airport is an enterprise account and requires no money from the general fund. So, we present this resolution to you tonight for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fernbaugh? Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. It's your pleasure. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I move to adopt the Resolution Number 6211. 62, what the heck do I have here? Same thing. Okay, got you, that's the resolution.
6209, parentheses 18.
I have the wrong one here, thank you.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Move on to item number six. Direction regarding a request from the Parks and Recreation Commission to consider changing Thompson Park sports fields from multi-purpose permitted facility to a single-purpose permitted facility for softball, baseball rental use only. Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, the members of the audience. I do have a slide presentation, so I will put that on for you. So, good evening, and again, we are here for Thompson Park, a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation to move Thompson Park to a single purpose. So, the recommendation for city council to consider, commission recommendation is to change the park's sports field from a multi-purpose permitted facility to a single-purpose permitted facility for only softball and baseball use only. Staff's recommendation, staff supports the current policy of Thompson Park and leave the facility a multi-purpose permitted facility, with the exception of youth tackle football. A little background, there was a public-private partnership on December 15, 2015, the city council approved appropriation of $209,648 for Thompson Park. The renovations were a direct result from a volunteer proposal by the Lompoc Girl Softball Association, the Lompoc Adult Softball League, and granite construction, and a lot of all our volunteer groups for the concerning of the conditions of the playing field at Thompson Park. We also received state, the grant funding from the Housing Related Parks and Program Grant Funding to renovate Thompson Park in the amount of $341,450. The grants were awarded to provide residents of the surrounding, the low-income housing access to parks. While there is no specific regulations indicating that all amenities of the park must remain open to those residents, the grant auditors, they may argue of such an interpretation of the intent of the grant. Commission's recommendation, on June 12th, the Ad-Hoc Committee proposed Thompson Park sports field can move to multi-purpose, move from a multi-purpose facility to a single-purpose facility for softball and baseball only. The gates of the sports field will remain unlocked for drop-in use, and again, this recommendation was approved by commission with a 4-0 vote. Typically, typically, we have, the Thompson Park is used by many groups and the public throughout the year, and anywhere from multi-sports camps throughout the year. We reserve the park for department programs or youth sports organizations, and beyond that, then, when the field is open, the public can come and rent the park for any purpose that they want to. Typically, though, the public rents Thompson Park for practices, and those are typically from 7:00 PM till 10:00 PM, when the youth organizations are done, and typically, all our youth organizations are done at 7:00, unless there's games being held out at Thompson Park, and they typically go until 9:00. Prior to our renovation, the Thompson Park was being rented about an average of 150 hours annually by AYSO, the local soccer, the community. Staff did put out a Survey Monkey, it's a little small up there, but we wanted to kind of get the input from the public. So, we put out four questions that were out there. Field is open to the public for all reservations and drop-in use, excluding organized tackle football, was 56 votes with 31.5%, which is the current policy. Field is locked at all times and only reserved for softball and baseball uses, which got 56 votes also. Field is open to the public and reserved for softball and baseball uses only, 23 votes, which is the commission recommendation policy. And the field is open to the public only for softball and baseball drop-in use reservations, and that received 43 votes. A little bit of discussion on pros and cons. Impacts, items for consideration for a multi-purpose use of Thompson Park. The pros, it maintains the current access to lighted fields for the community. The con is potential damage to the grass from the soccer activity impact. Discussion for pros and cons for single purpose. The pros, keep the fields in better condition due to limited use and less impact on the grass, protects the investment made by city council and the volunteer efforts. The cons, would limit access to lighted fields, increase the maintenance costs at other city sports parks, possible additional impact to other lighted park fields. We have Ryan Park, Thompson Park, and JM Park with lights, potential loss of revenue, and protects the investment in Thompson Park at the expense of other city parks. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact for changing Thompson Park sports field to single purpose would, could reduce rental revenue by approximately 2,500 to 3,500 annually. And again, that's just from the rentals at night that we receive. In conclusion, the Parks and Recreation Commission has voted unanimously to recommend the city council changing Thompson Park from a multi-purpose permitted facility to single purpose permitted facility for softball and baseball rental use only. This would help the Parks Division maintain the facility with their limited resources and protect the investment made by city council and the volunteer groups throughout the community. The Parks Recreation Division staff supports the current policy as a multi-purpose permitted facility, with the exception of youth tackle football. The reason for restricting youth tackle football from the field is the nature of the practices and the damage it could do to the turf. And that concludes my report, and we also have Commissioner Dave Baker here, who was on the Ad-Hoc Committee, and him and I will be available for questions.
Okay, first, any questions for Mr. Guerrero?
I have a question, so...
Okay, Councilperson Starbuck?
Who else would rent a baseball field?
Typically, the baseball community, the adult softball community typically plays in our leagues, they really don't rent the fields for lights. So, what we typically see is the adult soccer community, the club soccer, come out and rent the lights throughout the year.
So, it's basically soccer that uses it, other than the baseball and softball?
Other than the organized programs.
Councilmember Vega.
Mario, are the restrooms available to the public at all hours, or are they only for rentals? Are they only unlocked for rentals for people that are renting the field or the facilities?
Just at Thompson Park?
Yes, at Thompson Park, sir, yes.
Right now, we just put in a brand-new restroom, the facility, so that will be open and closed by timers, so we can put times on that for when it would be open and closed. Currently, it's with a key lock.
So, someone, it's not open to the public on the weekends, then, correct?
Yes.
For just the multi-use?
Typically, right now, all the bathrooms in the parks are open when the park opens, and then it closes at dusk. Unless it's an organized program that's going on, then the renter would have access, either through a key. Some of our parks have porta-potties, so it just depends on which park you're at. But Thompson Park will be going on to an automated door locking system.
And the reason I ask, as you noted, that it was grant money that helped refurbish the parks, and the policy wasn't clarified on use of the park, so to speak, so probably the restrooms is a policy, it was policy by city staff to not allow them to be open to the public, except by permission only, just clarifying that.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess the other question would be the change in multi-use to single use. As long as I've lived here, it's pretty much been a, pretty much a softball park. I remember, once upon a time, they used to be used by Park and Recreation's, allowing games and little board games and things, that's many years ago, to also use the facility on a summer program. Maybe we're way past... Maybe we're way past that because it was many years ago, you know, they used to have little board games and stuff out, out there. By making it a single use, would that prevent any other use by Park and Recs if they wanted to use that, that facility?
Again, it would allow us still to have some of our sports camps, but if the policy is baseball and softball only, we'd probably have to relocate. We used to have Little Kickers, the soccer camp out there, so we'd probably have to relocate that to another park. Typically, from all our parks here in Long Poak, we honor the traditional, the seasons for our youth sports organizations, so our spring seasons are the girl softball, our Little League, Babe Ruth, and that typically goes until the end of July, and then August through the, through the fall is AYSO and youth football. Some baseball and girl softball do try to put on a fall ball program, which we do let them, let them use those fields. It's, but if the fields are open, typically, in the past, we've let the other groups in town use those fields.
Thank you so much. I'd love to hear Dave Baker, as far as the Commission on their decision, as far as with, it sounds like a 4-0 vote, on letting that into a single use.
Yeah, before we get to Mr. Baker, I think there's more, some more couple of questions for Mr. Guerrero, so, Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah. One of the other questions, Mario, that I'm going to ask is, we put a lot of money into the JM Park, specifically for Little League games, hoping to, you know, engage tournaments, et cetera, et cetera. Is that single purpose only now?
No, we've, we've allowed AYSO during their All-Star program to use the outside, or to use the, the lighted field, so mid-November until the 1st of February, AYSO's out on both fields. We do limit them to one team per field during that time, and it's typically two to, two and a half hours per night, typically, Monday through, through Thursday for their All-Star program.
Okay, so, what is the negative impact on the Little League fields, then? Or is there damage caused by the AYSO, or?
You know, there's a little bit of damage throughout the year, there's a limited amount of resources to, to put back into the parks, so they do get wear and tear, just like all our parks. So, if they wouldn't have any other lighted fields, we'd, we'd have to try to relocate them during the winter time to just the Ryan Park, and that's our only other, the lighted possibility.
Councilor Mosby?
You mentioned 150 hours annually by AYSO and club soccer. So, where would they go? If they weren't allowed to use Thompson Park, where would they go? I assume they're there because of the lights, right?
Yes.
So, where would they go?
Probably for the last two years, they've utilized Ryan Park solely, so there's typically about, I would say anywhere from 50 to 100 people out at Ryan Park when, when it's rented at night, so it's pretty packed.
And Ryan's pretty worn out right now, right?
Yes.
Because we've kind of compacted and forced them into one narrow area.
Yes.
Right? So, it's not working too well, is it?
No, we need more lights here in town, obviously.
And it's kind of, only a half of that is lit, correct, at, at Ryan?
Yeah, it's just the out, just the outfield, it's about a 300-foot arc, and there's a little bit of spillage, but.
So, having Thompson go through renovations, is that kind of really putting a lot of stress, would you say, on, on the youth themselves? I guess it's primarily AYSO's renting those, those fields?
During their All-Star time, but pretty much, we have a pretty good adult soccer program that rents out River Bend every Sunday, the club soccer, so between the, the youth club and adult soccer, they've been utilizing Ryan Park probably three days a week at least.
Yeah, this is one of the reasons why I asked about possibility of putting lights down at River Bend, because there's definite huge pressures right now, and a diff, you wouldn't you say we're, we're shorted fields, desperately in need of more fields, especially with lights in the winter time?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, the lighted fields are already premium.
Thank you.
Councilor Osborne?
Mr. Guerrero, those rental fees, are those not applied back to the fields that they have been utilizing to help repair? Where are those rental fees put if, if not into repairing the fields that they're renting?
That they go back to the Enterprise Fund in Recreation to help rent those fields and keep, keep that process, that process of processing the rental fees and coming in, so it's, it's, right now, it's $22.50 an hour, so that's for admin costs, oversight of that program, renting out those fields.
So, the rental fees are only covering admin costs and supervising, and we're not charging enough to actually drive repair of the damage they're creating by renting these fields?
Yes, those, the rental fees don't go back into park maintenance, park maintenance is given out, or appropriated by, by City Council through the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Guerrero, years ago, I understand, Beatty Park used to be used for soccer. It's no longer used for soccer, is that correct?
We, we do have practices throughout the week there, T-ball during the spring, some AYSO or club soccer goes out there during the week, but on the weekends, AYSO uses River Bend Park now solely for games on, on Saturdays. So, that field's big enough to utilize their whole program all day long at River Bend, so we don't have games during the week anymore.
So, Beatty is just practice now?
Yeah, so now, all our interior parks for AYSO are all practice. Prior to River Bend, then, there was games on all the fields and the outfield, and they got a lot more wear and tear.
Okay. Mr. Baker, welcome.
Hi there. Dave Baker, Commissioner for the City of Long Poak Parks and Rec Department. I'd like to just kind of give the Commissioners's point of view from, from this, we're the ones that requested this change. The Commissioners take pride in being a, a voice from the community up to staff and yourselves. We also take pride in being the voice from you down to the community when there's hot topic issues. So, this issue here is, is longstanding with our parks. We were given the message that when, when the community that uses the parks complain or have concerns about the conditions of the field, the report back is, is really, we can't fix them. And that's just a reality, and we all understand that reality. And that inspired a group of people within the softball community to step up and assist with fixing them. So, a group of volunteers stepped up and put in quite a bit of man-hours and volunteer time to bring Thompson Park to a, a, a good playing condition that's safe. Number one, that's what it's all about, is having a safe place to recreate. This change in the policy is not about restriction or eliminating any user groups, it's just about protecting the investment that your community put together and stepped up to do to help. It's, it's about maintenance, okay? If we had a good maintenance plan and we had, not saying that there's a bad maintenance plan, but we, just the reality is, we don't have the amount of people and funds and resources to take care of the parks to the condition that they need. So, limiting the exposure to the groups that damage it most is what this is about. We're not closing parks, we will keep doors open, people could drop in and use them like any other park, but we're not inviting people to come play there that could damage it by accepting their rentals. That's all we're looking to do, is let's not accept the rentals from the people that have been damaging it. Question about JM Park, I coached there, baseball, it's damaged. The, the work that was done by volunteers is close to being completely ruined. It, it's been damaged, and it's not from the three outfielders that play there during Little League baseball. So, that is a concern, and to be honest, seeing the visual of JM Park is what made me so aggressive on protecting the investments at Thompson Park. This is not about eliminating soccer, and if you talk to the leaders of the soccer group, they'll be, they will tell you that I've stepped up to help them based on my experiences, to, to help them create a plan for their future, but until that gets organized, all we can do is protect the community's investment, and my voice is today, on behalf of the Commission, is we would like to, for you to make this change, and that's about it.
Councilor Starbuck?
Yeah. What kind of damage, Mr. Baker? I'm curious, because I, in my mind, I'm visualizing little kids running around kicking a soccer ball, and like you say, three outfielders aren't going to damage an outfield, but what kind of is, what is it, what is the damage that happens?
You know, it's, it's the, the damage to the turf that's out there. When, when you put quite a bit of activity on specific spots, it, it creates, the, the grass and turf wear away, and it needs to be replaced. And if, if we had a good, you know, if we could stay ahead of it, that's awesome, that's great, let's let everybody be out there, but we can't stay ahead of it, and that's the problem. And you go look at it right now, not so much, because we've had great maintenance crews, again, volunteers for the Long Poak Little League, but after the soccer season, if you will, take, take a look at, at what it looks like down there, and you can tell that it's not from Little Leaguers.
Councilor Vega?
You know, Dave, I, I see the investment that's been made, and I applaud all the volunteers that have put in that work. That park is absolutely beautiful, so all you guys have put in a lot of work. I can see you're here, you're here to protect this, and the fact that we have, we, the, the funds are limited for the maintenance of the parks is why you're asking or requesting this at this time until we, until revenue is found to do this. So, I'm thinking, well, because the other parks are in need of maintenance, we don't want this park to be ruined in the interim, and you want it to be enjoyed, I'm sure, because I've taken a look at that park, I've gone over there, it looks like it's still work in progress as far as bleachers and things like that, so I applaud you for all that work, I, I understand. I think the Commission is looking to, again, to protect the investment, that's why we have Commissioners and Comis, for, as an extension of the public, which is something we need is feedback, so I'd like everyone to at least note that this is just a maintenance issue because the funds that are available to put back, what's, what's already there, are not there. Traditionally, I see that we're using it because it's in good condition, but I can tell you, I've grown up here, and it traditionally was a softball type of baseball park, so I don't see that that change would, would, would be significant, except on the maintenance level, so I applaud you guys, and I do agree with the fact that we need to protect our investments, and so many good volunteers and hard workers were there, putting in their, their sweat. I saw that with you guys all out there with your tractors and everything out there, so thank you.
Councilor Mosby?
And where would you propose the thousands of youth hours of soccer that are played out there in Thompson Park, where would you propose they go?
Well, I have not talked to that group, and I haven't been part of the, the long-term planning for that group. There's private groups that rent lights in, in different parks and, and schools and stuff, but I haven't been part of that conversation of what their long-term plan is.
I just think there's this, you know, when we, we're trying to do something, we should have a solution that wraps around everything, and, I mean, that, it's one of the reasons why parks, in some communities, are part of public safety, because that's why we, we do what we do, and, you know, there's almost a, a million dollars that's been put in the whole entire park, and we've put a lot of eggs in one basket, so to say, in Thompson Park, and because we've done that, we've also, as, as Mario said, you know, Ryan Park has been stressed heavy.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, right now, unfortunately, in our situation, we are, we're very limited, especially facilities with lights.
I agree.
And, you know, how, how would we continue to maintain this? Would we, would we divide up the pie of maintenance money, or do we use general fund money? What money do we use to maintain just a softball-baseball complex? Would, do we just use, I mean, what do we do? Because it's everybody's money, it's all the general fund, do we?
Yeah, I don't have any answers to the money questions. I could just tell you what Commission's come up with, with recommendations on, on the policy, and I would agree that if we could come up with the proper amount of maintenance funds to stay ahead of the work, then this wouldn't be the issue it is today.
Yeah, so we don't, I mean, we don't, it doesn't seem like we have a solution of where we're going to get general, you know, the one general fund pot, so we got people whose families just play soccer, are going to put money into general fund to just maintain a softball-baseball field, so it doesn't, you know, it seems like we're stressed out a little bit, and I think originally, when it was purchased, the land was with, either purchased or given, it was to be for everybody, it wasn't an isolated, like tennis courts, I don't think there's a restricted covenant on this field at all. Does anybody know if there's something that said that, just softball only, I think it was a general use park as well, so we're, we're taking something differently, the design and purchase originating, and we're going to reduce it down and limit.
I'll, I'll say that you have a lot of youth sports and adult sports within this community, and you do not have enough places to put them, and I, I really hope that for the future, the Council can reevaluate the priorities of the parks, and that would be a great place for that conversation to lie.
And we had, we had some discussion about trying to get some lights down at, at River Bend, that was.
That would be excellent, I would love, and again, my kids play soccer down there, so this isn't anything personal, this is, and I have volunteered to be on some type of renovation board, I won't be their lead, but I will share my experiences from my previous projects, this project, and I, I, I will help them with whatever plan they want to try to put together, just haven't seen that yet.
It just, it seems like there's some open-ended questions yet, and I guess, one of the big outstanding, it's kind of underlying that was put out there was the, some of the grant funds that we received, we didn't say that would be restricted, they're kind of, hoping you make a comment in there that auditors may argue such an interpretation of the intent of the grant. I mean, is there something underlying there that more that, that you, on the $341,000 a grant we got, that was?
I'll, I'll say this, Mario could speak to his, his background on that comment, but we're not closing the park, and the park will be open, we had a lot of discussion at the Commission level, we, if the kids around that neighborhood want to go play in that park and kick a soccer ball around, absolutely, that's what it's there for, it's a public park. We're just asking, we're, we're just asking that city staff does not invite more people that are going to damage it.
So, it's not organized sports, organized soccer around there, is what you're saying?
I'm saying, let's, let's not accept money from someone that may damage it and not put that money back into it.
Thank you. Mario, did you have a comment on that, your comment, comment on your comment?
There was, there was talk kind of on our, the Survey Monkey about possibly locking the gates, and that was where that came from, so Commission's recommendation was not to lock the gates and let the drop-in still happen.
You think you'd have any pushback, the fact that you wouldn't have organized activities? Like the ASO for that area, because generally, when an ASO's playing, you're kind of in zones, and if that's your neighborhood, that's the park you go to, so.
Well, the, the problem kind of, pros and cons, then, that we discussed at the, the Commission level, typically, we only rent fields for lights, for non-organized, AYSO and other organizations, but the club teams and the, the soccer community don't come in and rent the fields when there's no lights. So, they just come and play until dusk, and then they leave, so if Thompson Park gates are open, then I'm sure that field is going to be flooded with soccer people during the day until dusk if it's not permitted for other specific use. So, it could be a backfire, then that, now you got 150 people out there until dusk because they don't have a permit, it's just an open field. So, you know, there's, there's that possibility also.
And if they were isolated from there, what would be their alternative park?
Again, they would, anywhere, the non-permitted soccer with the, the community, if they see Beatty and there's nobody out there, then they'll go and, go and have a practice out at Beatty, they just try to find an open space.
Kind of a long way to go for youth from Thompson Park all the way to Beatty to play.
Yeah, definitely.
Councilor Osborne?
Commissioner Baker, thank you for listening to the community. You are out there, you are part of that environment, you play the sports, you have kids that play the sports, you have partners that play these, and, and I think it's really important for us to pay attention to what you're hearing and what those requests are. So, I appreciate you bringing this concept forward, driving the discussion, and bringing the recommendation forward, since over half a million dollars has been invested in this, it has traditionally been a softball, and... It has traditionally been a softball and baseball field, and the loss of $25,000 to $3,500 that's not actually coming back and repairing that field has me concerned. So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I know that that is sometimes difficult to swim upstream and make suggestions that aren't necessarily welcomed. And I appreciate you also being willing to talk to the soccer community and share your insights and successes with them on how they could take ownership of any number of fields in our community and do similar things that I know that our softball and our baseball and our Little League community have stepped up to do. So you are a shining example, all of your peers in the softball, baseball, and Little League environment are really great examples on what it can be to be stepping up and, and taking ownership of a park and doing the volunteer work, so I really appreciate it.
On behalf of the commissioners that are here and the volunteers that helped make that, I say thank you.
Now that she's polished up your star, and I also, I want to congratulate you for listening to the community, but the, if we, if I look at that Survey Monkey, right, all the community is not in favor of making it a one sport.
If you consider the less than 200 votes, all of the community.
Yeah, but I mean, it was open there to the entire public, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the background on the Survey Monkey, and I don't know the integrity of that, and I can't speak on the Survey Monkey. I could just tell you that we'd like to protect that investment.
Sure, okay. Anyone else? Okay, this is somewhat unusual, but is there anyone, anyone from AYSO, other than a parent or something like that, anyone from the organization that would like to speak to us? Rebuttal. Okay, thank you very much, we're going to open this up for public comment.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. This is an elitist proposition. Those people that have the time and the funds and the equipment to volunteer to take care of a field that they are really interested in, and then restrict use to the rest of the city, I think is appalling. These are city parks, these should be open to everyone in the city, and the bathrooms, that was a problem at Ryan Park. The bathrooms should be open for citizens. All the parks should be maintained and open to citizens for their use. We shouldn't restrict use of any park. There are poor kids whose parents work two and three jobs that can't be out there volunteering, and they're probably pretty tired and not able to volunteer. This is an elitist proposition. And as far as funding to take care of the parks, you have money to burn. If you are putting murals on garbage trucks, you are throwing it down the drain. Take some of that money that's being thrown down the drain, eliminate those positions that are unnecessary, and stop putting murals on garbage trucks rather than fix the parks for your kids.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Lawrence Barbosa III, I'm with LGSA. I'm also one of the volunteers that stepped up to start this Thompson Park renovation. I don't, it's not that we want to limit the park to the public, it's just the organized groups that come in and overuse of that soccer facility. It's designed for a softball field, it's always been, as long as I've been here in Lompoc, it's been designed as a softball field. We took a park that was in really bad shape, gopher hole infested, and we put stainless steel gopher wire, new sod, and we did that so that the girls would have a safe place to play. Soccer has moved on, they use the, the school on Laurel and H Street, they have lights that have been donated to them, and they use that facility in the evenings. That's a nice, big soccer field for them. They also have LVMS soccer field that they can use. They don't use Beatty Park for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, but that could be used because it's in, in the ground, lower than the houses around, and they could put lights in there, temporary lights, if they wanted to. They have moved on, and like Dave has said, we've reached out to sock, the soccer community and the football community, because Ryan Park is in bad shape too, and trying to fix their issues, because gopher, gopher problems, that's the issue in this town. All the parks are gopher infested. Lompoc Girl's softball has one field, and that's Thompson Park, that's in great shape. The other field is LVMS, and if you drive by there, you'll see about 300 or 400 gopher mounds every day. And, so that is our one pristine field, and we're trying to preserve it for the girls, and we're trying to find a solution to where it's still open to the public, but we're using our time and our money to try to maintain what we've created with the help of the city and keep it in good shape. I've reached out to Mario, saying that maybe we could do a movie night at the park, at Thompson Park, because we have a concession stand, the, the city could use that concession stand to raise the extra money to, to make up that $3,000, and instead of doing it at Ryan Park. So that's the only other option I brought up to him, maybe doing some tournaments and stuff to bring in to make that extra money. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Mike Mendybliss, I was president of the LGSA when we signed the agreement to do the Thompson Park renovation project. Signing this agreement obligated us to perform all of the volunteer work to get it done. I hear mention of the dollars that the council put in, and we appreciate that, but looking at the efforts put forward by our volunteers and the dollar value you could place on the heavy machinery that was there for months, it doesn't even come close to what your contribution was. But this effort was put forward by the people of the LGSA for the girls of Lompoc. They need a place to play softball, a safe place, a nice place. There was a lot of work put into this, a lot more than was anticipated, and the LGSA personnel resourced what we needed to, to get the job done. It was a huge community effort, recognized by the city council, and I think because of that, knowing that this field was made for the girls, it should be kept for the girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Will Skyler, Lompoc. Kind of a dilemma, isn't it, council? I appreciate the citizens that are supporting the motion, I understand the reasons for doing that, having done various events in city parks and stuff, and it's really discouraging when you go out and work, and work, and work, and somebody comes in during the night and, you know, just disrupts everything. But a couple of things that are kind of bothering me on this. If I recall right, that park was put in with Quimby funds from the housing areas in, in that area there. You know, if you're going to take the park and change the use, you're going to have to refund the Quimby money. It's surrounded by family housing, some of our first housing tracks for Vandenberg Air Force Base are in that area, East Airport, or West Airport, and Long Island there, and that's where your starting families are now buying, so they're bringing their kids there for, to live in the, the community park, which is now going to be, you know, denied to them. And I think Councilmember Mosby's kind of hit on, it's the only park in the area. I can remember when it was, I can't remember the name of the park, it's up on the southwest side of Lompoc there, that the developer didn't want to put that park in there. When they come to council, finally to get his project approved, he had to donate that land for a city park, to make sure that there'd be a park there for those people. And so now you're kind of wanting to backpedal a little bit on it, so I, I'm, I understand both sides of the issue. It is, like I say, terrible to work and work and work on something and, and get it there. For years, we run the river, kept it nice and clean, everything else, then they kicked us out, and look at the mess we got there now. So, I don't know, I, I almost think you can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Brady, Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I couldn't keep sitting there. Honorable mayor and council members, this is a kind of a sticky one. I understand your frustration with where do the soccer people go? Probably the same place they are going now, and for the last two years. I understand Ryan Park is not a great place. It's horrible, but we have no money. You have a Parks Department with five people in it. How can they take care of all of these parks? They can't, and they, it shows. And I hear people talking about how the community can't use Thompson Park, you're trying to just do baseball. There's an area that is used every day in that park, where the picnic tables are, where the playground is for the kids. There is that community neighborhood vibe in that area, which is about, I don't know, half of the park. And yes, they do have access to the restrooms during the day, right, Mario? Yeah, for the park area being used. I think as Mr. Vega said, as long as I can remember, which is a long time, that has been a baseball softball park, and it was hoped at some point that we could have tournaments there. I mean, way back when my husband played ball, I remember. And this was kind of part of the concept of the commission, was if we could do something on a smaller scale, like Hagerman Field in Santa Maria, and bring others in, that's Dirk who would rent the park. If the organized adult leagues could get them in, the smaller leagues with the girls, the softball teams, they could bring in tournaments. So I just urge you to just vote your heart, that's all that, you know, you can do. So, thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Wow, I'm really torn, and the reason I'm torn is I'm a regular subscriber to HCD Housing and Community Development, and I recall several years back, when I was reading through the newsletters, and I came across the article about the funding to benefit low and income residents. And I forwarded that to several of you council members, I don't know if any of you recall, and it eventually made its way back to Teresa Gallivan, and it was the basis for the funding of this renovation. It was a grant designed for the benefit of the low-income residents in the immediate area of the park in which the funds were going to be utilized. That being said, I firmly believe in, in what, what Parks and Rec Commission is saying. My children grew up playing on the field, my, my children played on those fields in horrible conditions from the time they were little girls, and now they've gone on to high school and one's in college. So I, I, I'm torn, I want to see the fields preserved, but also on, on the principle of the matter, I think you have to take careful consideration, because 300, I believe it was over $350,000 of the funds were actually from a grant from HCD, and I believe there, I mean, you have to acknowledge that, and before you would restrict, I'd ask that you make absolute certain that there would be a replacement for any other sports that were displaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Mosby.
Mr. Wilkie stepped out, I guess, so. Although, there he is. I, I assume the fiscal staff recommends, is that you? If the limitation to use of the sports fields is considered, then to also require the beneficiaries of the dedicated facilities provided for the maintenance, did that come?
That was a, that was a suggestion for how we could be able to transfer some of the obligations of the Parks Department to the other parks that are going to be used more. So my concern was that by safeguarding this park, other parks should be used more. So how do we transfer that, those resources to cover those that are being used more often? So that was an idea, probably in hindsight, it should have been something that was addressed when the initial volunteer effort was proposed, just to say how we're going to take care of this at the end, but it wasn't, so it's not clear how, how it was supposed to go from the time that was done in perpetuity, so.
Okay, and do you remember, or maybe the city attorney could answer, that was in the original agreement that was signed with the group, was there anything saying that you guys do all of this, you're going to get a special, single-use-only on this deal?
I apologize, Councilmember, I don't remember off the top of my head what that agreement said.
Assistant City Manager's got.
Yeah, I, I don't recollect that there was any commitment made for a single purpose, and also just your earlier question about the HRPP grant, and what also was commented by public, I just wanted to reiterate that that grant basis was for public access for the neighboring community to the park, and we just wanted to put that sense in there so you're aware that if, if we're audited, that discussion could come up.
Okay, and that was $341,000, which is a significant, we probably wouldn't have done any of the renovations without that grant component?
Oh, that, that contributed substantially to also the second phase and the bleachers that are going in around the ballpark, so while it may not be the field proper, it's amenities that you go to watch the games.
And how was the bathroom, that's not?
The bathroom, I think that was.
Is it CTBG?
Yeah.
So that's on, that's on top, that's not even in your calculation here, that was another, how much? 200 grand? Somewhere in that ballpark, so, yeah. Okay, so we don't know if we're going to get audited and get in trouble. Maybe, maybe we've done this a little bit too hastily to find out if we could even do this, without having to refund 340 grand?
If I could just add, based on the description of what the grant was for and the suggestion, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just making the record clear. If the council went with what the Parks and Rec Commission was suggesting, which includes public use of the park, I think that would meet the intent of that grant.
Going, going in single purpose and not?
It's not single purpose, it's organized, single purpose, but open to the public for any use.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Panani, for clarifying that. I was going to state, it sounds like the proposal is to limit the rental of the field to a single-use purpose, and that is what they're asking for. This is not being elitist, this is being protective of an investment for those who utilize it for the organized sport it was designed for. The neighborhoods, the housing that surrounds it, they can still go play a pickup game of any or, any sport they like to play. If it's softball, if it's baseball, if it's soccer, that field will be open until sunset, dusk, and they can play whatever sport they want. So it's not denying access to the field to the local neighborhood around it that helped fund it. All it's saying that if it's going to be rented, and a profit of any sort is going to be made, that it be limited to baseball or softball. So I don't think it has that possibility of risking the audit and having to pay back that money, because we're not saying the neighborhood can't play baseball, the neighborhood can't play softball, the neighborhood can't play soccer. Heck, you can go out and play tennis on it if you can figure out how to play on clay, right? So again, I think that it's one of the only ways we can continue to make improvements and thank the volunteers that have invested far more, not only time, but money and energy and respect what they're doing, if we want other groups to do that, because we need other groups to do that at other parks. So we need to respect their requests. So I support us making the rental of the field single purpose.
Councilmember Vega.
I also applaud the work of the commission and the extension to the public. That is District Two. District Two is made up an older-established neighborhood, it's high density, there are people there with not, little or nothing to do. Many of the people that go there, and I can tell you from my own experience, go there as spectators. You guys watch sports on TV, people enjoy seeing the kids out there having fun. You guys are advocates of the families, so am I. So basically, what happens here is we have people out here that can still use the barbecue facilities, they can still use the picnic facilities, they can still use the playground facilities. It traditionally has always been this. It traditionally has always been this use. There's no one here that can actually say that it was a different use. I've grown up here all my life, and I'd like to have somebody say that it was a different use. I can tell you, it's been mixed and matched, but it's always been predominantly a baseball, softball field and for the use of the public. In that area, in that district from which I reside, I will tell you, pride of ownership takes over every time I go by that park. It is beautiful. Every time I saw another improvement out there, it was pride of ownership. I'm sure all the neighbors out there and everything are proud to have that park there in the middle of an older, established neighborhood from which what? Not much has been built there in a long time. All we have is that we have to see people having fun. One of the things about Lompoc that we always want, we always, through the eyes of our children, wonder if some of these people that live here have forgotten what fun is, what relieving stress is, what doing the right thing is. I used to have to go to a, hey, believe it or not, I was a Boy Scout. These were things where my parents redirected us and redirected our energies. Sports was the same thing. Sports was the avenue for creating friends with lifelong relationships. It taught you good sportsmanship, and it actually made you a very good person. Competitiveness, and it also taught you to win, to lose, and hold your head up. So I have to advocate that this is not just restricting use of the park. This is just protecting the maintenance of the park until it comes up to a time where there's more funding available, where, hey, Park and Rec has the funding to actually come in and do the maintenance. But in the meantime, we need an example so that we can build another park like that and people like you that would come over here and they advocate for, hey, it's not all just girl softball. You have boys, you have girls, you have football, there are going to be parents out there, they're going to extend themselves if they feel that their value, their value is there. People always, what they do is you have to put value on your time, and I think that's what you're asking for. Value of your time and the maintenance of that project. So, thank you guys for all your volunteerism.
Councilmember Mosby.
Maybe the council can discuss one of the other questions that's put out there, and that is the maintenance component of this. You know, like Mario was saying, that you're going to put a lot more impacts on the other fields. And they're asking, if you're doing this, looking at the last page for the fiscal impact component, that they're saying that if limitations of the use of the sports fields is considered, then to also require the beneficiaries of the dedicated facilities to provide for maintenance. So they're saying if you're giving that and you're using general fund component, are you going to use the same percentage or are you going to have to do more at the other fields? So maybe you've got a, you guys have a recommendation of how you move along with that?
Okay, so you want to address Councilmember Mosby's comment, or otherwise I'm going to go to, you're going to address Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, I am. Okay. I think that part of our budget talks coming up in the future here and waiting to see what the budget actually ends up, I think with our city manager and something, is something we need to discuss. In the future here, near future, we're going to be coming up with council priorities. And again, one of our proposals is to say, hey, if parks is one of our priorities because of families, then we need to pick and choose which park or which parks have the added impact from which the funds need to go first. And I would say that that's probably a choice that we need to make. In general, we've in general put in priorities that have in general just said, we're going to do this, this, and this. We never seem to find the money globally, but I think it's our obligation as policymakers to help staff and come up with a recommendation of where the monies need to be allotted as they come in.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Okay, in the staff report here, it says fiscal staff, so this isn't out of the Parks Department, but their recommendation is require the beneficiaries of the dedicated facilities to provide for the maintenance. There's some sense to that. If you're the sole user, you should be the sole maintainer, I think, on it, other than the fact that you're not the sole user of it. I'm wondering why this hasn't come up with the Little League and JM Park. If we were to do this with Thompson Park, it would seem relevant to me that we would do it at Johns Manville Fields. We spent a lot of money on the renovation there, and now I understand they're being damaged, it's not being maintained. We can't throw the AYSO under the bus on this, but if we were to dedicate Thompson Park as a single-purpose ballfield, I would want to include Johns Manville Park in there for the same reasons, but then we have nowhere for AYSO to go play. But it could put our concentration on River Bend Park at that point if Lompoc Girl Softball stepped up, if Little League stepped up, if, you know, as the maintenance people for this. So, I mean, how far do we want to go into this, I guess?
Commissioner Baker, did you want to address him?
I just want to make the comment that the information we got from commission or to commission from the public is where we ended up today. Personally, as I mentioned earlier, the visual effects of overuse at JM Park is what put me over that we need to protect the one we just built so that three, four years down the road, we're not in the same place with two ugly parks again after years of a lot of work by the volunteers. And again, this is a maintenance issue. If we could turn the corner on the funding and the manpower and fix the damages each time they're done, then we could go back to the way it's always been. But this was our recommendation since they can't be maintained.
Councilmember Osborne.
I will yield the floor to Councilmember Mosby if he has questions specifically to that discussion, given I have different points, so.
Well, I'll let Councilmember Osborne go on with her points, but I just, I think a lot of the things are answered, and I think just the simple point is that whatever we're doing here, I think should come back, if we move forward with this recommendation, should come back within a year, to bring it back in a year for discussion, to see what kind of inputs you get from the public and see what, if we go forward with this motion, what's happening with park maintenance staff, with the funds that is going, and how AYSO and the other soccer groups are receiving this, and other movements that have gone on, because I know Mr. Baker, and I'm going to make a motion later tonight to answer your question about a park maintenance crew, volunteer group, we already kind of started one, so, but I'll do that later tonight, which I'm going to wait for you to call me. But I think whatever, if we go forward with this, that we, whoever makes the motion to bring it forward, I know you have more discussion, that we have this come back in a year for more discussion. So that'll.
If I can just make a point, just kind of wanted to bring it back post, pre-renovation of Thompson Park. Some of the park maintenance, what we would do with our youth organizations, having three-lighted fields, it would allow Parks Department to do maintenance on JM Park, and then we'd put them on Thompson and Ryan. Once that maintenance or the thatching was done, then we put them back, and then we would shut down certain parks. So it gave us an option to do it. In the past two years, JM and Ryan were the only ones. That's why that impact, and they didn't have the time to rejuvenate. Pioneer Park right now in the Bay Bruce outfield, there's football going out there because, again, we are impacted, but during the winter, that field doesn't have any lights and it has time to renovate and rejuvenate. So there was a maintenance plan prior to the thing, and we used to bump those organizations that way. So I just kind of wanted to put out that maintenance plan from what it used to be prior to the renovation.
Councilmember Osborne.
Excellent points brought up by Councilmember Mosby. Unfortunately, the topic for tonight is whether or not Thompson Park should remain a single purpose. So I think that's where we should stick to and that we should then, as a council, request that staff come back at a later point, not only to share an evaluation of how making it a single purpose has affected us, but recommendations on how to address the other issues that were brought up for discussion tonight. So again, great identification of potential issues, and yes, those need to be addressed, but they are not part of the discussion as to whether or not a single-purpose permit should happen on this particular park. So my recommendation and my motion is to accept the recommendation by the commission directing that Parks and Rec Commission consider changing Thompson Park to a single-use purpose with a request that staff return in a year to inform us of that impact, both financially and maintenance, and how that's been played out and how it's affected the other parks. And also, within a few months, come back with a discussion about what we are doing to address the impacts it's having on the other organized sports, because this is an ongoing discussion that we're going to have more than once, and we need to address as part of regaining JM Ballpark. So again, my motion is to accept the recommendation from the commission and make Thompson a single-use park.
Along with those other components on there as well?
Absolutely.
I'd give you a second with that.
I already gave him a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded twice. Councilmember Mosby actually seconded. Okay, any further discussion? Then let's vote. That passes 5-0. We are going to item number, item number seven, which is direction regarding request from the Parks and Recreation Commission to consider policy for sponsorship events held in city parks. Okay.
Thank you again. The recommendation, staff and Parks and Recreation Commission recommend that the city council direct staff to prepare a resolution approving a policy for commission to approve sponsorships of events held at city in Lompoc parks or recreation facilities, and the amount not to exceed $1,000 per event and $10,000 per fiscal year. Each sponsorship would be used to offset fees that the city would otherwise impose onto the event coordinator. A little background, at the commission and council joint meeting on February 6, 2018, Councilmember Vega suggested that the creation of a policy to award sponsorships for events for such purposes would allow city sponsorship approval to be awarded through, at the commission level. On October, or April 10th, there was an ad hoc committee consisting of Pat Brady, the chair, and Commissioner Steve Bridge to create the sponsorship policy. The ad hoc committee, they met several times and created a policy which was in your packet. On June 12th, the commission voted on the policy and was recommended for approval on a 4-0 vote. Discussion, the policy provides a customer-friendly policy to allow event organizers the ability to request city sponsorship for their events, which again, they must be held at a city park or recreation facility. The sponsorship would reimburse the city for city permits, fees, costs, and only the direct city services. All the event coordinators would still be responsible for any activities that they brought in to the park, i.e. porta-potties or any type of vendors coming in. The fiscal impact, I'll touch base quick, and I believe Mr. Wilkie was going to say a few words, but it would, again, would be $10,000 per fiscal year for the 1921 budget for a total of $20,000 from the general fund. Mr. Wilkie, did you want to touch base a little bit on the fiscal?
Councilmembers mayor, the one thing I'm concerned about with doing this policy is not necessarily anything to do with the policy, it's committing funds to the 1921 budget before we even start the budget process. So if this is something we want to do, it can be done with the current appropriations that are available in the non-departmental program that's already there for sponsorships. But I would suggest and recommend that we don't extend the commitment beyond the remaining portion of the 17, 19 fiscal year.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Wilkie, don't we currently budget over $300,000 already for events? I'm going to throw out Flower Festival, Spring Arts, Mexican Independence Day, car shows, cruises. We've already budgeted, if I'm not mistaken, it's over $300,000 to park recreation for this.
Well, it's not just parks and recreation.
No, but citywide events.
It's also road closures for parades, it's solid waste cans that are provided for events, electrical water services are provided for events. This is primarily talking about fees that would otherwise have to be paid to the Recreation Division for a program. So it's sort of more limited in scope than what you're talking about, which is the community events that are city-sponsored. So it's, there are some of those programs that have failed to continue, so there are some remainder funds of that $300,000, that's for a two-year budget cycle, that could be redirected towards this program. To me, when, and I wasn't here for the last week, I apologize for that, but, so there's could be some evolving discussions about this, but this is, to me, kind of the group that's trying to start something during the fiscal period. They don't really have a mechanism to try to get on that list because that list is set at the time that we approve the budget. And it's based on historically what those big programs are, like the Flower Festival that we have always been behind. It's the new people that come in that say, how can we do this? And rather than waiting next to your budget cycle, this is a mechanism where they might be able to get off the ground, so.
Mr. Gurrell, one of the questions I have on this is, and it's probably more to the commission than to yourself, but $1,000 max, 10 times a year, what is our guideline? Who gets this? How are you going to select? Are you going to, I don't follow what this is all going to be. How are we going to make a determination who gets what? Is it our friend? Is it, you know, a valid organ, is it something that's reoccurring? How are we going to determine who gets the $1,000 break?
Well, we do have a criteria for consideration, so with the policy, there would be two different times throughout the year that even organizers can come in, submit their application. Let's take, for example, the Mexican Independence. That happens every year. If they wanted to apply for sponsorship, they would have an opportunity to do it, and then commission, it'd be sort of like the human services that they would come in, get the applications, the event organizers would come, explain that they're events, and then again, commission would award up to $1,000. Some events only pay the $2.75 plus the fire inspection, so their ask might only be $400, $500. So there are certain people then that want electrical pedestals, and that might be a little bit more. So it's just that type of opportunity of what they request in their guidelines, but...
Pat Brady would like to say a few words.
Thank you. This came up, as Mario said, when we had our meeting with the council. And Mr. Vega suggested that we may be able to do something. I mean, we used to award, you know, not monies to them, but everyone would come to us, to the commission, and tell us, you know, we can't pay this amount, we need $100 credit, we need this, that, and the other. And we were told that was not to happen anymore. So Mr. Vega suggested, on the attorney's advice, that the council could give us a restricted way to help these people out. As it is right now, and so this is what we came up with, was that if people needed to have $100 or $200 credit to pay for some little thing that the city was charging for, that they could turn in the application and we would go through them, just like Human Services does. We would look at those applications, decide if we wanted to haul the people in and talk to them, and make that decision. As it is now, we barely see, we actually have asked not to see them anymore, people who apply, because by the time we get to see who's going to do something in town... Because by the time we get to see who's going to do something in town, some event, it's been done, it's...sometimes it's over with, but staff does it all. And so we don't even see the people anymore. And for me personally, I really miss that, and I don't think we're serving the community by doing that. Everyone goes directly to staff. With anything going on, we don't even see anybody at our meetings anymore. So for me, this kind of gives us that community feel again. And again, it would happen twice a year, and in advance, and we would know who was coming in, what they really needed, if they needed anything. And maybe that will happen also, that we won't even see anybody, because they aren't getting it now, so they may not. Otherwise, if they needed to have something reduced, they have to come to you. If you want to do that, that's fine, you know, but we'll do whatever you wish us to do. But this was a way on Mr. Vega's suggestion.
Thank you. Councilman Osborne.
I read through your recommendations on the process, and I appreciate you, the ad hoc committee within the Parks and Rec for thoroughly vetting how you would address this. So thank you for providing that, I did read through it. I did witness the Human Service Commission's process, and you are mimicking to a certain degree, so I think it's a great way to start. I appreciate the fact that you've identified a way to contribute and support not only your community and give another outlet to them again to come and hopefully have some of those fees and those smaller incidentals that are difficult for many of our smaller events and nonprofits to pay, an opportunity to gain that support. And last but not least, taking something off council's plate. I mean, again, it's a way for the Commission to support council in taking some of the smaller decisions that do not necessarily have to come all the way to council. So again, identifying ways that you can contribute as volunteers is really important, and I really appreciate that, because this is your free time you're giving up. So you're volunteering to do this level of work and stay connected with the community and educate this opportunity, and take back some of that, I really appreciate. To city staff, Mr. Wilkie, you're recommending that we try this for the rest of the '17, '19 fiscal year in order to make sure, A, the program works, and then B, not allot money ahead of a budget cycle we haven't even discussed. Is that correct? Okay. So the idea would be, we implement it '17, '19, it gives us a chance to evaluate both how it's going for us as council and it's going for the Commission, and then when budget time comes around, if we have the ability to implement it on a more regular basis, we can do so. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Vega.
Pat, thank you for your comments. It's definitely a community service. I look back at a former Park and Recs Commissioner, Arlen Seacrest, and I remember how compassionate he was. He would actually go to the parks, actually physically walk through them, and I think he probably thought he owned them all, but he used to go there and actually walk the place and see. And I want that same passion to be back with Park and Recs. Tonight, I just appointed another, a new Park and Recreation Commissioner, and I want you guys to feel valuable. I don't want you guys to come in here with recommendations because you're an extension of the council and have the council not listen to you. If it was me over there and you didn't listen to me, I wouldn't do it anymore. So basically, the value is your time, you came back with a recommendation so council could vet, and we did vet it. We did go back and forth to see what the particulars, with the help of the city attorney. So I want you guys to know, the commissioners are valuable. I did it for myself also prior to council. And sometimes you wonder what you're doing there, because it seems like sometimes the department heads, they have it all together, and sometimes you're just there nodding your head, but it's important. If you have a department head that has all his ducks lined up, which most of them do, then it's a bonus, and hopefully you're learning something from this. So Mario, thank you also. I can see, you can see where this could be a great benefit also, because it keeps it off the council, and it empowers the community to do an outreach to Park and Recs, which is also another avenue for the public to know that, hey, I'm going to approach a Park and Recs Commissioner, maybe they can help us. So thank you very much.
Councilman Mosby.
You know, on the sponsorship, are you looking at $1,000 per applicant per six months period, or can they say, "I'm going to have six events, I want $1,000 six times for the thing"? Is there...
Actually, my understanding is that we could, if you came to us and you needed $200, then we could award you 200. That would give us another 800 for other people. So it's not awarding $1,000 per person, and it's $1,000 per their event.
So if they had six events, if they had an event once a month, could they get money?
I doubt it. I don't think the Commission would do that. I mean, that's going to be a decision like you all would make, we would have to do that. And I personally would not do that. I wouldn't say, "Okay, Joe Blow, you're going to have six events, and I'm going to give you $6,000 in a year when there's other people asking for money." No.
Maybe that should be spilled out, limited to a maximum of $1,000 per cycle.
Right.
Something like that.
Good idea.
Councilman Vega.
Yeah, I concur. And Mario, maybe something since there's an $1,000 allotment per event, if someone wants to ask for 200, which would be half of 1,000, maybe we could restrict them to coming back and asking, you know, in a six-month period, you know, if they don't use their full allotment, maybe that would be some sort of a guideline, unless you guys come up with something else.
Good idea, too.
I think that would probably restrict frivolous requests of somebody who doesn't have their ducks all lined up and comes in without a plan.
And one other thing I want to add is, we didn't restrict this just to parks, so these can be awarded also, which is different to events in our community centers. So if a nonprofit wanted to come in and do something, benefit something, they can apply for it, and so...
Did you put that part in there, or what?
Well, Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment.
John Lynn, Lompoc resident. What you are doing is giving back to the Park and Recreation Commission that which they had for at least 30 years, because I can remember back in 1983 where I attended a Park and Rec Commission meeting, and they were waiving some fees. You'll recall that a few years ago, then-city manager Wymiller opinioned that they didn't have the power to do that. And thankfully, now a way has been found to give them back that power. And most of the fees that I saw waived were anywhere from $100 to $300, so they weren't $1,000 amounts. So I would strongly encourage you to give back to them that which they had forever that worked so successfully that they now lack. And the other thing that you'll be doing is taking a little load off staff and putting it on us volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So I'm a little confused. So what's the total amount of this going to be? And the reason why I ask is, we just restricted the use of potentially one nonprofit group because of lack of funds, and now we're going to give funds back to other nonprofit groups. So one idea would be, is to somebody to get together with ASO or the other nonprofit groups that have just lost access, and maybe give them some type of bonus for lights and the other place. It's a little confusing.
Okay, so unless Mario, you want to stand up? It's my understanding, the amount is $10,000 per year, but a maximum of $1,000 per event. Is that...
Yes, there's, I think there's six or seven events that were already in the budget that were $1,000 or less, so those events could come back to us. That's why the amount was $10,000. And then we, Commission would still have that flexibility. If those same groups were awarded, they would still have some other, the flexibility, or if council wanted to keep those groups that are already funded in the budget, then these would only be for new, the new type of events, then that's council's priority.
So $10,000 per fiscal year, $1,000 per event, that doesn't mean that it's limiting the committee to 10 events. It could be 50 events, $200 here, $400 there, $300 here.
Definitely.
Okay. Hopefully that explains it. Do you want to add to your question? You okay? Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council.
If there's no further discussion, I think it makes sense to do this and do it for the '17, '19 fiscal years recommended by fiscal staff. So to, the motion would be to direct the request for Parks and Rec Commission to have sponsorship events at the $10,000 per fiscal year for '17, '19, with nothing to exceed $1,000 per event.
And I'll second it. Okay, council member, no discussion. Councilman Mosby.
Is it per event or per applicant per six-month period? I think it was every six months they come back, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, two different cycles.
Or per applicant per six-month period, or per...so somebody's having six events in six months, they could get a...
So you would like to see the application process adapted to limit how many times they can come back for, the group can come back, the applicant can come back?
I'd say the limitation of $1,000 per six-month period, so one person's not getting all of it?
Is that acceptable by staff and the Commission? I mean, is that within the consideration of...so we'll give that a try, and if it doesn't work out, we can reassess it during 2019, '21.
Sounds great.
I will add that to the motion.
Okay, I still gave a second.
Okay, Councilman Mosby. Okay, Councilman Vega.
I just wanted to second the motion for the third time. Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded twice. Any other discussion? Then let's vote. That passes 5-0. Moving on to item number eight. Item number eight is Formation Of An Internal Revenue Code Section 501(c)(3) Nonprofit Corporation For The Benefit Of City Parks And Recreation Facilities Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the recommendation, Staff and Parks Recreation Commission recommend that the city council support a formation of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation for the purpose of enhancing city of Lompoc-owned and operated parks and recreation facilities and programs. The Commission expressed a desire to create a nonprofit corporation for the benefit of city parks and recreation facility and programs. We held a public workshop with the stakeholders in the community, and it was great. We had about 25 people with staff and the community, a bunch of great ideas. And then again, on March 8th, the Commission voted 3 to 1 to support the recommendation of bringing to council to support this. Discussion during the workshops, the participants drafted proposals, statements, and goals. We looked at the different aspects, the strength, weaknesses, but the recurring themes is then that the stakeholders were in favor of the support of the concept. Again, it's about the concept, so that the fiscal impact, if the formation is supported by city council, then city staff will completely identify the cost of formation of costs, as well as ongoing operational cost. In conclusion, if the city, again, if the city council supports moving ahead on this proposal, then the cost and the staff time estimates will be vetted, as well as potential revenues. A nonprofit for the benefit of city parks and recreation facilities and programs has the potential to bring in additional funding to supplement existing budget appropriations of the city park and recreation facilities for development, maintenance, and program services. And that concludes the report, and I'm open for questions.
Councilman Starbuck.
Don't we already have a Lompoc Valley Park and Pool Foundation that's a 501(c)(3)?
Well, they were, the Lompoc Chamber and the Pool Foundation were at the workshop. They both do have the same opportunity of umbrellas for people to be underneath them there, but just the overall, the Commission and wanting to be a standalone, we're still going to have to have a structure, the grant writing and the different stuff, and both of those foundations don't provide that, so we're going to be providing that as a foundation.
So you need a separate nonprofit because of the grant writing?
Well, it would just be, the only thing that would be different would be the nonprofit, but again, that's a consideration if council wants...
It seems like we're just duplicating here.
It would just be a city foundation. Other cities are, it's a familiar process. One of the stakeholders was the foundation Play in Santa Maria, which is a city foundation that's very successful, has city staff as long with volunteers, so that they came and talked about their foundation. But again, it would just be a standalone with the city and a direct communication with the council.
And I mean, currently, if I, you know, our Park and Pool Foundation operates a Bike Skills Park, Barkin Park, Disc Golf in Beatty Park, and so, I'll listen.
Councilman Mosby.
You mentioned a nonprofit in Santa Maria?
Yes.
Do you know what the annual cost is?
It just differs because they have staff than that, I mean, but then if those are items, then we would come back and vet, but being with, under an umbrella with that one or starting our own, typically those are going to be some of the same cost of staff, researching, meetings, just like we do with Commission.
You know, I chaired a nonprofit for four years. I still provide rent and cover their utilities still, so I mean, nonprofits are expensive in oversight and maintenance of it. I mean, I just, just a little hesitant, as I wish we had more numbers to kind of know ballpark-ish what we're looking at here. It can get very expensive. Is it going to be self-insured under the city, or would it be carrying its own insurance policy? Do you know...
Mayor, Councilmembers, so at this point, we really wanted to make sure that the council wants us to invest time on this concept, because we do need to answer all those questions on how much time would this take. It would be, the way it's proposed, the concept from the workshop and from the Commission was that it would be for city parks and recreation facilities and programs, and to do that, we can have staff work on it. So that is, in order to have staff work on it, it would need to be for the purposes specifically of city parks, programs, recreation facilities. So tonight, we wanted to make sure, before we go investing time and more research on the formation, what the Board of Directors would look like, and all of those details, we want to make sure that the council is in support of this, because we recognize there are a variety of groups out there and different ways that we could form a 501(c)(3), whether it be under an umbrella or our own, and that's why we wanted to have that workshop and the discussion with the Commission to be very clear about what the concept is we're proposing. Did that answer your question?
Be very, yeah, be very clear about what you're proposing, but right now, we're proposing to go and see what it is we want to do?
Well, we're proposing, we want to make sure that this is the concept that the groups we talked to and the Commission would like to see carried forward to you, to see if you would support it, so we can spend more time to give you greater detail.
And my concern is potentially giving a blank check, so to say here, then once it goes through, do you hire one more city employee, or what is it you're trying to do?
We would bring this back to you with more information before we go a step further.
Thank you.
Councilman Vega. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain a little bit. It's been a long time since we decided to do this. We actually have two, I think we have, we only have four members now, we have a new fifth one, but we only had four members at the time that this came about, and we decided we wanted to do this. we wanted to do this. One of them left, so then there were three, and then there were just two of us, and the others are new. So, they came in after all of this discussion, but they agreed with what we wanted to do. It's just taken a long time to get to you. It's been quite a while, but I don't even remember a lot about it, except that this came about when we were getting the complaints about the parks and what horrible shape they were in, and the fact that there was not enough staff, there was not money to take care of them, and we thought, and talked to the man from Santa Maria, that maybe if we had a foundation, that we could channel money into that, into bringing back our parks and some of our facilities maybe that needed it. But that was kind of where we were with that, and we didn't go any further as the assistant manager said. We wanted to see if it was something that would actually fly before we got staff time and money put into it. And no, Mr. Mosby, we're not asking for a blank check.
Councilmember Vega?
Again, Teresa, it looks like the 501(c)(3) is actually a mechanism for which staff time can be recuperated or recouped prior to working on another solution. Is that correct? Is that a way of...
Well, if we had a 501(c)(3), we think that we might be able to access additional grant funding, and that there might be some admin costs that would cover staff time once that came through. Until that point, though, it would be adding to our existing, adding work to our existing list of resources.
So, would it be retroactive, all the cost, once the 501(c)(3) is put in?
No.
I think with the, the concept would be great with a different set of people involved as far as a board of directors. We have volunteers that have helped with the parks, with Thompson Park. I think, you know, some of these people that have been instrumental in actually putting the whole situation together and making the park would be probably beneficial to me, and they probably could encourage other parents to be involved in some of these other, such as Ryan Park or Riverbend Park, as long as the event was funded. So, I think that would be a direction I'd like to see happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Again, this is a situation unlike two of the other discussions from Parks and Rec tonight, where actually the Parks and Rec Commission and the departments agree. So, that's a plus one, is that they both see the importance of potentially being able to acquire new revenue sources such as grants, that right now, we're dependent upon other organizations being willing to organize and acquire, and then potentially give to us as a pass-through agency. But that doesn't happen on a regular enough basis with either of the other organizations that currently exist. Those charters do not set themselves up in order to do things like grant requests and research and writing of grants. That is, that is a huge amount of time and takes a certain level of expertise. On top of that, we do not have, as a city, the opportunity that if somebody wants to donate directly to the city to improve something and designate it for, let's say, a specific sport like soccer or tennis, or they want to, to a specific park, and they want to improve a specific park, there's no mechanism for that to happen, and those other organizations that exist have not seen that as a way to help us maintain and improve the current parks that we own. The other organizations are a donation, the Chamber has the ability, you can donate to a foundation, and that foundation can then choose to pass it on, but that's up to that foundation. The Parks and Pool Foundation, they're all about new parks. They're not necessarily about maintenance or improvement. It's not sexy to do maintenance and improvement of the parks unless you do something as great as we've done with Thompson Park, for example, which really excites a community. So, I really appreciate the idea, and I've worked for several nonprofits, not just run them, but worked for them, done the grant writing, done the grant research, done the appeals. So, I would like for us to have staff fully vet this idea and come back to us with a proposal of what it would cost, so that we can make a good decision about how this would help us maintain, improve, revitalize the current parks that we have and that we're responsible for, that we're coming up short for. So, unfortunately, because we don't have new revenue measures on the ballot to gain additional funds to do the kinds of things we need to do, we need to look at other opportunities. And if we're going to ask people to donate, I think we need to have a voice in what those potential monies are and where they're going, and not depend on outside agencies. And so, having a 501(c)(3) that is part of the city and directed to the city and has staffed the opportunity, potential, do some of the work, even if it's identifying an additional person that is specifically to grant writing, I mean, this is a very specific job, and if you get a good grant writer and they are successful, it goes beyond just Parks and Rec. It turns into benefits for the entire city. So, again, I, I think we need to authorize staff to go ahead and vet this idea and come back to a flushed-out idea of what it would actually look like, so we can make a better decision.
Anyone else? Do we do public comment on this yet? Okay, public comment.
John Lin, chairman of the Parks Foundation you were discussing. I think there's some misunderstanding about what the Parks Foundation does, but first I want to say, past practice of the city is that the city doesn't have a nonprofit, it has independent nonprofits. We have a Parks Foundation, we founded in two thousand eight, and by my quick thinking out here in the audience, I think we've put six hundred and fifty thousand dollars into parks in the city in materials, labor and time. I don't even know how much the Police Foundation has raised, I'm sure they've raised more than we have, and I know the Fire Foundation has done more. But I want to make your choice very simple here tonight. The Parks Foundation is, it's not really a single thing, it's anything you want it to be, and I'd be delighted to bring you all copies of the bylaws and everything else so you can read it. Any ten people in Longpoke can come to the foundation and say, "We want to start a committee, and this is what we want to do." We have asked the city numerous times over since two thousand eight if they would like to join the foundation for the purposes of getting grants, providing sports scholarships, and any number of other ideas, and the response has always been, "No, not right now." So, what does the foundation provide? It provides insurance and accounting, and it allows each committee to raise its own money and spend its own money, but it also provides oversight. So, the board is composed of the four permanent officers and the chairman of each committee. We currently have recently added a senior activities committee, which is putting on monthly activities at various facilities in Longpoke for seniors. So, the, we would be delighted to have the city join us next week. Our meeting is on Monday. I would be happy to help them write up a proposal, and they could utilize our 501(c)(3) for any fundraising they want to do for parks, recreation or the pool. Those are our limitations. And they would need a committee of ten members, and the thought behind that is if there aren't ten people interested, you probably shouldn't go forward with it. So, we would be absolutely delighted to help you, and you wouldn't have any cost upfront, because we have all of those things in place. And if, at some point in the future, you want to go off and form your own 501(c)(3), as one of our committees is thinking about doing now, the money goes with the committee when they form their own. So, we're ready to take you in, we're ready to start you up, it won't cost you any money, and you can be in business next week. And by the way, we have written grants successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Longpoke. I'm going to sound like a broken record. Subjective, selective funding. Once again, the last item in this item, you're expending funds that you previously didn't plan to spend, but you just took away use of a facility because of funding. I would like to commend Councilor Vega for bringing up the fact that when you make council priorities, that you really evaluate them so that you don't pull back services from one group and then immediately turn around and provide funding for another. The youth, I think, is really important, and I think that you really need to think things through before you go forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, I'd rather the staff member be out eradicating gophers and painting benches and stuff, but I will go ahead and make the motion that council goes ahead and allows staff to investigate their own 501(c)(3), but I'd like to also include on that, investigate teaming with the existing Park and Pool Foundation 501, so we have a comparable.
Do we have a second on that? Okay, no second. Could I have another motion then? Councilmember Osborne?
I move to recommend that staff explore the nonprofit corporation and bring back a report on how that would be established and what the costs would be.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Then let's vote. That passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number nine. Item number nine is adoption of Resolution 6113 (18) approving supplemental appropriations for triage funding for riverbed cleanup. And that is not Mario Guerrero. Mr. Trup?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you, as a staff recommending the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, but not to exceed forty thousand dollars for the triage center that is related to the ongoing riverbed cleanup, what we've been doing with this piece of the, this second phase of the project is we have to offer up a triage, which is behavioral wellness, public health, other types of services for these people that are going to be vacating the riverbed to come out, and somehow, we will hopefully help them move on to better lifestyles and choices and whatnot. Without it, it's a critical point of the cleanup. So, we've also been working with the county, other community-based agencies to help partner in this. We have, Good Sam has already said they'd contribute thirty-five hundred dollars towards our forty thousand dollar budget. Since this report was done, the county has also said they'll be able to bring over showers, so that's another thousand dollars less. So, as we went through the budget, this forty thousand was a worst case. With the help of these different partners, we've been able to bring that down, but we just need some sort of approval now, so we know we have a budget to spend, we have appropriation there. I can say it won't be the forty, because we've already had contributions. The talks with the county, they're going back, we met with the assistant CAO last week, so she's going back to talk with the county itself to see what kind of partnership we can have. So, I'm hoping this decreases substantially through the partnerships, but to get this funded, to make sure we can pay the bills upfront, we need the approval of the council. And a real quick backup for those on the homeless cleanup and the riverbed cleanup, the first phase we went through was notification of everyone in the riverbed. We're now at the point where the police department's going out and actually handing out physical letters to them stating, "Here's what's going to be going on," and they're doing that now on a weekly basis. As we get within a three-day period, they'll go out daily to give them the notices to say, "This is what's coming along." So, we're doing that part, making sure we've notified everybody. The second phase is the triage, which is this part tonight. That's critical. We're hoping to have as many people come from the riverbed over to that and take on those services. Some of them could be reunification, we have that down there where they might have family members, they just can't get to them. So, there's some funding there. Some might need birth certificates, another documentation in order to get other services, so we'll help them with that. Once this part's done, it's open for thirty days, we'll then close that triage center down, and then we'll begin the actual physical cleanup of the riverbed. In that one, we're still looking for the vendors that can come give us some kind of quotes. It's most likely going to be a time in materials, because when you see the quantity down there and where it is and how hard it is to get to, I don't know if any vendor will ever just give us a number and stick to it. So, we're still looking for those. That one will come back to you as yet another staff report. So, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Trup? Okay, while you're there, I just want to, I made a comment earlier today with, I think Mr. Trup was there. I was at a meeting in Northern California with a group of, I think, seventeen cities, and mainly in Northern California. Cities in Northern California have heard about our plan, so I really want to compliment, Mr. Trup, you're new to this, but I want, you're taking over, so thank you for that. Police Chief Walsh, they've heard about this, and they said, "How can we get a copy of your plan?" There's a lot of good words out there, so I told him, just make a request, so. So, we're doing, we're doing a good job, I believe.
Charge them thirty-five hundred bucks.
Well, yeah. So, anyway, people around the state have heard about what we're doing, they appreciate what we're doing, and we certainly appreciate what you're doing in our community, so thank you very much. Questions to Mr. Trup? Okay, open this up for the public. Seeing no one rise, we're going to come back to the council. It's your pleasure. Mr. Mosby?
I'd like to thank Mr. Trup for coming in, doing the budget adjustment, coming through here for the supplemental appropriations. You know, it's coming down the line, so you did a good job with everybody and the chief. I know you guys have been working, both chiefs have been working difficult, and everybody else on there, so it's probably the most we've seen at this hour in the room still, and I think a lot of the people are here for what's going on with the triage center, so thank you guys for coordinating this.
Okay, councilmember Osborne?
Staff already knows how I feel about this, but I will repeat what everyone else is saying. Thank you. This is a huge issue, and I think we should take pride in treating everyone as the human beings they are and trying to respect them for the situation they are in and hold out a hand to them. If you're interested, I'm going to read a couple of things, so the public is aware of the money needed and what some of those items are, in case you're interested, because again, Micomissions has partnered with the city and is providing the opportunity with a dedicated fund that can be donated to, to support this process. And they are standalone, they are providing documentation saying that they are not proselytizing during any of this, that it is simply to help the homeless issue, so those that need reunification, those that need rent deposits, those that need help. If you're interested in helping, there is a way to donate, and it's wonderful that this organization has stepped up to provide a, again, a partner to volunteer to. So, a couple of things to think about if you're a community member or a business owner. Fencing to go around the facility is predicted to be at a thousand dollars. We've heard that showers are being stepped up for, those were a thousand dollars. Toilets are needed, that's approximately a thousand dollars. Storage for those bringing items forward that they want to keep, we need to be able to store those safely for them, approximately a thousand dollars. We have insurance needs. If there's an insurance company out there and wants to get their name on the side of the fence about insurance, approximately a thousand dollars. There's the bus certificates, bus passes, total of about a thousand dollars, but you can make a twenty-five dollar donation to help cover the cost of a bus certificate or a driver's license. Oh, that's thirty-five, unless you're going for the, the brand-new one. There's food and beverage, those needs around a thousand dollars. If you're a restaurant out there, if you're a grocery store and you want to donate, this is an opportune time. Office space for a coordinator, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Maybe there's someone out there that has a trailer they want to donate for the timeframe for office space. Maybe there's someone who has a building that they want to deliver. And then, of course, equipment rentals, and I know we have several equipment rental places in town, so I would check with city staff on what those needs are, and you could have it out there, and we will happily promote that you donated those to it. And then again, volunteers and shelter beds, and if you have a room to rent, or you want to help someone out, or you know of somebody who's looking for a roommate, these are opportunities to open our doors to those that live in our backyard and need a helping hand. So, thank you again to staff for doing this, thank you to those partners who've already stepped up, and thank you to those who are about to, because you believe that we can show the rest of the state of California how to do this right. to do this right and take responsibility for our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank the chief and all city staff and all the churches involved and all the clergy people that are involved in helping do this in a humanitarian manner. I know that mental health is also part of this. I know all of us could be down on our luck with a snap of the fingers. I think part of this is respect for the people that live here, respect for the people that are down on their luck, respect for the people that would like a helping hand, but also respect for our city also. I think that's, all goes hand in hand. I think all of us require an element of safety and knowing that our children and our families are safe also. So we're doing this full circle. And again, with that, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt resolution 6213, approving supplemental appropriations for triage funding for the riverbed cleanup in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars at this time.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes five zero. Okay. And work continues. Okay, that, everything communications.
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay, oral communications, it's your last opportunity, speak to us for up to two minutes.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. The reason that I come up here tonight is to ask for a shift in policy. Under your code enforcement, you have a title in the new website, which is, says, "Keep it safe, keep it beautiful, cooperative effort with the City of Lompoc and its neighbors." It goes on and describes the protection, promotion of health and safety of Lompoc residents and businesses. Focusing on these goals, the city has adopted codes that govern the use and maintenance of private property in order to enhance and protect the quality of life for all who work, live, and enjoy the City of Lompoc. I have in my possession five code violation letters that are the result of illegal dumping. Illegal dumping is becoming very rampant within the city. The problem is, is that there are three other ordinance, under the ordinance that I'm being cited for, that very clearly state that it's illegal to dump, that it's illegal to go in the waste cans and scavenge, and it's illegal to go in the recycle cans and take city property. I'm gonna be a little bit sarcastic, but I wanna know, is it my gender? My ethnicity? Is it my religion? What is it that prevents me as a property owner from getting the same protection under the law as other residents? And I'm stating that because I've been in front of you now many, many times stating and requesting that we do something to protect all residents from all activity under the Health and Safety Code. I recently went in an alley as a crew of workers were dumping tons of furniture along a fence of a property I own, and asked them to please not do that. And I can't use the words that were told to me, nor would want any of you to feel the threat that I felt, and I just walked away. I've posted on, on social media the dumping that's occurred on almost every other daily basis. It's diminished quite significantly since I started posting videos. But I'm asking you to look at a fine system for illegal dumpers. I'll give you the municipality, I forgot to bring it when I printed these up, of the one city that had a reduction of sixty-seven percent of this type of activity when they implemented a stringent fine for illegal dumping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna say, the Riverbed Triage Center, we had a meeting today. There are some immediate needs. If anybody has sleeping bags, a couple tents, water jugs, dog crates. We are gonna allow dogs, but at night, they gotta be crated. So we're trying to find those things before Monday, and if anybody wants, has those, that's watching, they could bring them to the Bridge House Shelter, and Brian Halterman will warehouse those till we're ready for them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public communication, and we're gonna come to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Mosby.
Just wanna make one, well, several comments. One about Pioneer Park, I don't know if people have noticed, but there's a new bathroom coming to Pioneer Park. January, December-ish, sometime in that timeframe, so there's a big upgrade coming there. They're making installment payments and getting the footprint design laid out on that one, so the people have been concerned about that, and there's been a bunch of people from public concerned about that. It's coming. The other thing is, Councilmember Starbuck and I last Friday initiated a program that we've been working on for a while, and that is to rehab the turf areas in parks. We started at Ryan Park with a small group of us, core group, as an experimental plot, putting some soil out there, using the same methodology I use in my recreation fields. If you've seen my recreation fields, I had, what did I have out there? I had twenty-six club soccer teams playing on my fields, I had four baseball teams, and I had a semi-pro football team playing on two fields. And maintenance, 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 and you keep it upright, and you can all get along and get it together. So using the same methodology there, we're using it at Ryan Park. So we initiated that, and anybody who's interested, contact myself or Councilmember Starbuck, we'll get you on the list. We're starting off small, we're gonna expand this, we're in the, doing the old part of Ryan first. It's gonna take a lot because it's been forgotten for a while, and we do have a patch that we're working on and expanding from there. So we'll let you know more, we're gonna try to coordinate, get the list together, there's plenty to go around. We're also looking for somebody, because we have permission to do volunteer efforts with the gopher gassing machines. So I'm looking for some people who have a little bit of time on that so they can get trained to go out and do that as well, because we need to start eradicating the gophers. So, you know, as Lompoc does, we step up, and we need to step up, and this is the time to do this. We know what our parks need, and, you know, Mr. Baker, you offered already, so Councilmember Starbuck and I will take the lead on this, so we're, with the soil and such, we'll do it there and we'll try to expand to other parks. The other thing I wanted to make a comment about, and as a council request, the park impact fee monies. Maybe we could get a presentation to come back of where those park impact fee monies are being spent. I know there was a significant chunk of money. How they're being spent, I know that some of them are stretched out, but maybe in light of some of the movements that we did tonight, maybe we need to re-look at some of those park impact fee monies and see where they're going and try to coordinate and balance. And as it is, and some people say the council doesn't care about it, but our council priority list, number six was rehabilitation of turf at city parks. So it is on our list of things that we are wanting to do. And it takes time to get things on your list. Before, public safety was number one, and it's taken time to get to that component, and as of July first, through the budget numbers, approximately two million dollars worth of raises have been passed out to public safety. So those who say we're not taking care of that, we did step up, and you haven't heard the chief out here saying, "I need more money because I'm losing guys," I mean, probably still is, but we, we came up and gave some of the largest raises in the public safety sector the City of Lompoc has done. So we did step into that, it takes a year or two to get through these lists. So with that, I would, about bringing back park impact fees and where they're going, conversation what they are, and some ability to put some action on these items and maybe redirect how the impact fees, I think there was over a million dollars in impact fees, along with Quimby fees, and how these are being directed and where they're going. So with that, I would need two other people to try to bring that back for discussion.
I'll give you a second on it.
I'll give you a third. Okay.
And let's see. We'll stop there, thank you. Remember, get ahold of myself or Councilmember Starbuck, we'll put you on the list.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to mention, I went on a walk this afternoon to the Fallen Warrior Memorial that's out at Beatty Park, and it's absolutely beautiful and work in progress. I went out there with Ms. Lori Lane, who lost her son in the battlefield, and I wanted to let everyone know that, to help benefit that project, they can be someone that's passed on or somebody that's alive at this time, and they're selling tiles with memorial tiles. Bob, you're well aware of that project, and I think it's a worthwhile, super worthwhile cause. They're two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a tile, and they'll be, I believe, in granite placed in that enclosure there up at the park, so if you guys ever get a chance, walk up there and see the work in progress. It has a chain link fence out in front of it. For more information on tiles, you can either contact myself, or you can contact Lori Lane. Both of us have applications, and I think it's a great cause. And then, second, I'd like to bring up and have a council request. I've had numerous, numerous requests throughout the community and in my district, which is District Two, that we look for a solution to bring back either a public market or a swap meet and find a solution for a fast-track method within the city to bring back another source of recreation, possibly for one time a week with some sort of, doing a, either a request for proposal, request for qualifications to find out who out there in the community is interested in managing an event like this. And I think the property in question right now by most of the people that have approached me is that parking lot area that's right in front of the Chamber of Commerce. We didn't wanna go back to the same old situation that we had before, but it's in a commercial district. Currently on a Friday, we have a farmer's market, so I'm hoping that I'll get enough support to at least allow staff to come back with us with some sort of fast-track method for which we can do this. Anyway, that's my request. So that the people of Lompoc can also have that recreation back again.
I'd give you a second on that.
I don't want it to die for lack of a third, but I've been in recusal on that the whole time, so I don't know how appropriate it would be for me to ask for it if it's going to be at that location.
I was gonna warn you, it's not appropriate.
Well, what if I, what if I reworded that request?
I don't wanna play right now.
I'll give you a third. I hate to define the location as part of that. I would rather see that the community, someone in the community proposes where they'd like to see that location and that, what city property might be available to do that, because I think that was something that grew organically and impacted the community around it. So while the parking lot in front of the chamber is one idea, I hate to say that that's the exact location. So as part of that recommendation, I think staff should come back and recommend what locations, if it was a city property, what it would be.
Perfect, thank you.
And Councilmember Mosby, is that?
Yes.
Thanks, Dirk.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Councilmember Osborne.
So I did attend the reveal of the murals on the refuse truck, and I wanna thank the Parks and Rec Department and the Public Works Department for putting that contest on. It really honored our community's commitment to the arts, was a creative way to draw attention to the improvements that we're trying to make to our equipment, and the students who won that really took pride in their community, and I think that's an important thing that we need to do, is take pride in our community. So thank you for all the departments that worked on that, for hosting the contest. I remember being at the luncheon where we voted on it, and I was really impressed with all of that. So I personally think it is one way to reflect how much we have as a city a connection with our art community and believing in our students. I also attended the Planning Commission, who's going through an extensive review of comments on the zoning ordinance. I would ask that anyone who has extensive commentary on this, please submit in writing to the Planning Department ahead of attending the next Planning Commission for this. They have a lot to get through, and they would like to deal with the biggest concerns and the ones that have the most impact, and dealing with line by line at the meeting is sort of disrespectful to that volunteer group. So please take in mind that you have the opportunity to submit in com, in writing your public comments. Please do that, because that meeting could've gotten a lot more accomplished had that taken place. If you can't do that or have no desire to do that, you could make an appointment to discuss with staff, and Planning Department can direct you to the appropriate staff to talk to. I attended the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors meeting, as the city manager mentioned, and making an appeal for other entities to help us identify and provide revenue to cover the cost of doing the riverbed cleanup. And finally, I met with the Lompoc Unified School District Bond Committee on the measure that is coming forward. The community should also pay attention to that. It's really important, as far as economic development goes, that a school district be impressive to those companies and businesses and business owners who wanna relocate here. And right now, our school district has issues and is not attractive to those who wanna relocate and those that have families. So please look at the bond measure, please examine it, please talk to those that were on the Oversight Committee for the last bond measure, and better understand that, because that decision also affects our city and how we draw in great businesses and new families and potential homeowners when we get those houses built. I have no council requests, other than to ask that we be very aware, as four of us are campaigning right now, about campaigning from the dais. I would like us to respect our community and know that what we do up here is our job as an elected official, and that campaigning is kept to the campaign and off this dais. So I ask for that respect amongst us and to our community to not campaign from the dais. Finally, there is a candidate forum for mayor and city council members that is being hosted by the American Association of University Women on Monday, the seventeenth of this month, in this room. If you can attend, please do. It is a great way to get to know your council candidates and your mayoral candidates. If you can't attend, it will be filmed and rebroadcast on TAP TV. So on the evening of the seventeenth, here in the city council chambers at six o'clock will be the AAUW candidate forum. And then also look, they're hosting several other candidate forums, also on the local bond measures and other candidacy, so please pay attention to those and take advantage of those opportunities. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. The twenty-second and twenty-third of last month, I attended meetings up in Roseville representing the City of Lompoc with Northern California Power Agency. The city paid for my motel room and paid my mileage, I drove my own vehicle. On the twenty-eighth, I presented a certificate of appreciation to the new Starbucks store here in town. The Starbucks town, or Starbucks here, the new one, as the one up on H Street, dedicated that store to Veterans Family Store. So it was nice that they recognized the impact of veterans in our community and for veterans both nationwide, so. And nothing else for me to report. So with that, this Lompoc City Council meeting is adjourned to a regularly scheduled meeting, six-thirty PM on September eighteenth. Good night and thank you.